Good morning and welcome to the City of Rapid City Planning Commission for March 23rd, 2017. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the Planning Commission Agenda, there are speaker request forms on the table along the left wall. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the staff seated on the left of the dais. At this time, we would also like to ask if any member of the audience has a cellphone or other electronic device that you either turn it off or turn the ringer to silent. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting is not disrupted. Items one through 12 have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items: Item 3, 17 PD 008; Item 7, 17 PD 009; Item 10, 16 UR 005. The Rapid City Planning Commission's actions on these items are all final unless any party appeals that decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the Community Planning and Development Services Department by close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items, one through 12, staff would like to remove? Are there any items, one through, well, one through 12, that the planning commission would like removed? Sure. And any of the remaining items, one through six, 10, 11, that the audience would like removed from the consent calendar? Steve made the motion to approve items one through six, number 10, and number 11. Is there a second to that motion? Karen made the second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven? Yeah.
Testing. There we go. So, Galen, just, I recognize that you pulled seven and eight because they're associated with nine. This is, this is the area where the Black Hills Credit Union is currently located on North Plaza Drive. There is a 22-acre parcel that is currently two lots, and they're subdividing it into three lots. As a part of that, the intent is that the Black Hills Federal Credit Union parking area will be expanded, so they're enlarging that lot. And by doing so, in order to construct that parking lot, they have to rezone what was once a part of the golf course to light industrial. And then because their project is within a planned development, the major amendment is to expand the boundaries to include that additional parking area and for the parking itself. You may recall that when you originally approved their expansion project, it was with a reduction in parking, and this actually brings forward some of that parking that they had previously requested to be reduced, so that they're meeting their parking needs.
Okay. I guess I pulled that because I, I guess it was a little, we're converting a golf course to a parking lot kind of triggered it for me a little bit, and we're converting that to light industrial, is that right?
Correct.
So that is within the entrance corridor, but as long as it's within that planned development, then it's all on the same previously approved.
Exactly. And in this case, based on the other uses within this area, it is in compliance with the future land use plan and the city's comprehensive plan, and we looked at that as well. So the reason that I had wanted to pull item number nine is because there's a gentleman that has a property that's to the north and west of this area, and he brought forward an affidavit of easement that was a very old document, and it described an easement requirement between property owners that would allow access from his lot down through this property in some unknown dimension to North Plaza Drive. We have been working with him and the applicant and Black Hills Federal Credit Union, and I must say that the coordination between everyone is an example of what we should all follow. There's been some great communication and conversation, and everyone's on the same page that they want to ensure that his ingress and egress is secured as this project goes forward. So, on the dais today, you have a handout with an added stipulation to the plat application, item number nine, that says prior to submittal of an engineering plan application, the street right-of-way as per the affidavit of easement recorded at Register of Deeds shall be addressed. And they're currently coordinating that action to date, and we anticipate when the construction plans come in, we will see that. So with that being said, we are recommending that the three applications be approved as noted in the staff reports.
Unless the commission sees a reason, I'd like to take items seven through nine together. Okay. Galen made the motion to approve items seven through nine. Okay, with, with all stipulations by staff, including the added one on item nine. Galen made that motion. Steve seconded the motion. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13.
So Patsy's here to speak to that today. I had originally pulled it because there are people in the audience. Twelve. I had originally pulled it because there are people in the audience who identified that they were here with questions. We just wanted to note that the notification requirement was not met on this item. It must be continued for two weeks, and in the future, we will put these items on non-consent. Ms. Bowman has informed us that she does need to abstain from them. So with that, I would let Patsy make any presentations, or if there are specific questions from those in the audience, if there's something we can answer. Otherwise, it will be continued for two weeks, and Patsy would be making, will be making a presentation in two weeks. So if that works, and you can come back, then we'd get, make a full presentation in two weeks.
It is.
Yes. Two weeks.
Yeah, I'd look for a motion to continue for two weeks. What's the date on that?
April 6th.
Okay. Steve made the motion to continue for two weeks, the April 6th, Planning Commission. Is there a second? I might have, Mike seconded that. All those in favor of the continuation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now to item 13.
The applicant has requested that item 13, the initial planned development, be continued two meetings to the April 20th Planning Commission meeting to address design issues.
Steve made the motion to continue to the April 20th Planning Commission meeting. Mike G. made the second on that. All those in favor of the continuation, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 14?
Item 14 is a major amendment to a planned development to expand Rapid City Regional Hospital. This is a great project. We just wanted to bring it before you to show you what's going on. There are no exceptions being requested, but we wanted to take you through it since it's such a big project. Rapid City Regional Hospital is located in southeast corner Fairmont and Fifth Street, Properties Zone General Commercial District in a planned development. We've seen in the past few months a couple of other major amendments, one of them to expand their central utility plant, which will support the proposed expansion today, as well as a expansion to construct a three-level parking garage and a 100-stall parking lot on that south end, Fifth Street and Elk Street. This is phase two of their proposed expansion plans, and it's broken up into a couple phases. Aerial view of the property. It's a second tower. It's going to be located on the south side of the building. Future land use shows it as employment center, and major street plan shows arterial streets being Fifth Street and Fairmont Boulevard. So the proposed project is a five-story tower, 80 feet in height. Phase one, or, sorry, phase 2A will include the construction of a new lobby, a new emergency room department, and a two-level bed tower with a total of 64 beds, which will be phased in 32 at a time. Phase 2B is a two-level parking garage, adding another 481 parking spaces and 95 surface parking spaces, which will be linked into the three-level parking garage that's currently under construction. In addition, it will include the construction of a 61,104-square-foot medical office building as part of the tower expansion. Some of the elevations submitted by the applicant showing, looking to the north on that south side, showing what the proposed expansion will look like. And some elevations, 80 feet in height, the helipad will be moved to the new tower location when it is constructed. And site plan showing the expansion area here. And one thing to note is, one of our concerns was parking. The applicant has indicated that this next phase of development will not begin construction until the current parking garage, which is under construction, is completed. And they've demonstrated that there is sufficient parking through the construction phases being provided for what is required for the hospital. Another issue which needs to be addressed, as in the staff report, is the traffic impact study has been submitted, but it has not been approved yet, and prior to issuance of a building permit, that traffic impact study needs to be resubmitted for review and approval. Another image showing the extent of the construction. Here's the two-level parking area. It'll actually be on level with Fifth Street with a lower level of parking, and it'll tie into the parking garage, which is currently under construction in this area. Sign package, all new signage throughout the site. Another elevation. Landscaping, all their landscaping's going to be in compliance with the zoning ordinance, and this just goes through some of those details. This is taking a look at the property, looking east from Fifth Street. Sign is posted on the property at the current tower, and some of the construction underway with the three-level parking structure. Looking south on Fifth Street, some of that parking, last major amendment for parking, which was up on that south end. Looking to the north, and the traffic impact study will address some of the issues that a lot of people see with traffic on Fifth Street and the expansion. So that report will recommend some improvements, which would need to be approved by a city's traffic engineer. Looking from the interior of the site at the construction underway and the existing, looking south from the current parking lot, this is the utility, central utility plant expansion that's going on. And looking south at the new parking structure under construction, and in the area of the new tower expansion, looking at the existing tower. And this is from Third Street, looking south. Third Street will be the new access, I believe, for the new emergency room. And looking north, back to Fairmont Boulevard along Third Street. Again, this is a big project. We wanted to put on non-consent so that we could all take a look at it. They're not asking for any exceptions. It's a project we're excited about, and staff is recommending that the major amendment be approved with the stipulations noted in the staff report.
Thanks, Fletcher. Questions or comments from the commission? Counselor Andrew.
Thank you. I just need some clarity here. The parking ramp is for employees only, or is it for everyone? What is, what is this purpose?
The applicant's engineer is here to answer some questions.
If you could identify yourself to start off with, that'd be great.
Yes, my name is Will Crunk with Crunk Engineering. I'm the civil engineer and represent the applicant on this project. Yes, it's going to be partly for employees in the lower levels, but also for patients because where the parking garage is located is the closest parking to the hospital, so we want to have that be available for patients as well.
And so that'll free up some of the other spaces as well for visitors?
Correct.
Okay. And then the, the tower is to be expanded. Could you tell me a little bit more about that?
Right. Currently, the, the main, the second floor level will be the, where the main lobby entry is. Excuse me. The first level will be kind of below ground on that south side of the hospital. So as you go in the main lobby, the emergency room will be on that same level as well. And then the bed tower right now is, is going to be two floors above that, so on the third and fourth floor. The third floor will be built out right now for 32 beds. The fourth floor will be shell space to where you can go in and, you know, retroactively add in 32 beds, once the hospital determines that those beds are needed. So it'll be empty until they recognize that demand needs those beds be filled. But then that tower is constructed with the ability to go up future floors in the, in the, in the future, but that's so far in the future that, you know, we don't know when that might be, but at least 10 years in the future.
Okay, and then I heard a helipad would be, is that on top of the tower?
Yes, it'll be on the roof with the elevator access directly down into the emergency room.
So even with the helipad there, you could still expand above it if necessary?
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Karen Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is just a simple one. Are you, in effect, we're taking the front entrance to the hospital and making it on the south side, is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct.
Okay. That's what I could see, but I just wanted to make sure that's what I saw. Thanks.
Steve made the motion to approve item 14 per the staff recommendations. Galen seconded that motion. Any further discussion on it? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15.
Item number 15 is 17 RZ 010, a rezoning request from light industrial, or general commercial district to light industrial district for property located south, on the north side of East St. Patrick Street and west of South Valley Drive. As you can see, there's light industrial to the north, a buffer of general commercial, and then to the south is an established residential, single-family residential neighborhood, Zone Low Density Residential District. Currently, the property is void of structural development other than two existing billboard signs, which will remain in place. The future land use of the property is mixed-use commercial along the revitalization corridor. One of the things I wanted to point out here was that to the southeast, in this southeast corner of that intersection of East St. Patrick Street and South Valley Drive, is the proposed Johnson Ranch development, which is a mixed commercial and residential development. In addition, we have existing residential on the south side of East St. Patrick Street, commercial development on this lot to the east, and you can see that the commercial, mixed-use commercial provides a buffer between the light industrial district to the north and the residential to that south. With the development happening to the southeast, having this mixed-use commercial in a revitalization corridor, rezoning it to light industrial does not promote the revitalization of a mixed-use commercial corridor. East St. Patrick Street is also identified as in arterial street, principal arterial street on the city's major street plan. Here we have a photo looking from the east side of the property into the site, and you can see the existing billboards and some of that industrial that's to the north. And again, the site is not currently developed with anything, with no structures, no buildings that could be reused for a light industrial use. Looking at the interior of the site, looking to the west along East St. Patrick Street, and you can see the residential neighborhood and single-family homes that are on that south side of the street, which this general commercial district provides that buffer along with East St. Patrick Street from the light industrial uses. Again, looking towards that residential neighborhood. This is the Valley Sports Bar located on the adjacent property to the east, and then you can see in this area, that's the proposed Johnson Ranch subdivision. Again, a mix of commercial and residential development that is proposed and, which would probably trigger additional commercial being needed to serve that residential population. Again, looking at the sports bar to, that's, Valley Sports Bar on the adjacent property to the east. Looking at the industrial development that's to the north of the subject property, and it is staff's understanding that the adjacent property owner is the one looking to purchase this property in order to expand their operations. And this is looking at the adjacent property to the west and along East St. Patrick Street to the west and the adjacent property. The proposed rezoning would erode an established buffer between industrial uses to the north and established residential neighborhood located on the south side of East St. Pat property, but it's a revitalization corridor and current development, such as the Johnson Ranch subdivision. The rezoning does not support the revitalization of this mixed-use residential and commercial development. And based on the type of uses allowed in the light industrial district, the expansion of an industrial corridor along this section of East St. Patrick Street would not support the goal of revitalization. And with that, staff is recommending that the rezoning request be denied. Are there any questions for staff?
John?
What's the zoning of the property to the west?
It is general commercial district.
And they want to expand the operation? Right?
I believe the adjacent property owner owns the properties to the west and the north, so it would appear they have the offices for their use on the property's Zone General Commercial District.
So why would they make it light industrial if they're already using the property as general commercial next door?
The proposed use that they're putting in there is industrial in nature, just an outdoor storage yard with fencing around it.
So what are some of the other uses allowed in light industrial?
There's, we'll grab the zoning ordinance right now.
So we'd gone through some of this at our last meeting when we had a similar rezoning request, and there are a lot of similar uses in light industrial that would also be allowed in general commercial. However, there are some that are sensitive and may not be appropriate for the residential development that is existing directly to the south and proposed to the southeast as identified by Fletcher with a part of the Johnson Ranch subdivision. Your freighting and trucking yard, yards are allowed, contractors' equipment, storage yards, material yards. There is an asphalt batch plant that could be allowed as a part of a conditional use that, once it's, it's a part of a light industrial district, then it's, would be something that could be considered for this property. Boundary casting. Those that would be similar might include garden centers and banks, retail, office use. There are those components that can toggle between the light industrial and the commercial. And I think that that's why the general commercial to the west works, where they could have an office there, but the, the trucking and outdoor storage needs to be in the light industrial area, which we have to the north. This property is that piece that's currently general commercial that provides that buffer, that separation between the light industrial that the zoning map showed to the north of that strip along St. Patrick Street and the residential that's to the south. Does that answer your question, John?
Is this going to be a planned development?
It's not been brought in that way.
So once it's rezoned, we could have an asphalt plant there?
Again, there are those uses that are conditional, but you do have the option, if it's your desire to bring this forward, to place it in a planned development so that you could look at any future use of the site.
We'll think about that.
Mike?
At this point, I guess I don't understand exactly what they want to do different to John's point, I think he was trying to make, is what do they want different? It sounds like they're just expanding the business, but...
I do have a request from the agent for the applicant here to speak. Would that help?
I think that if we got somebody up to...
Mr. Chair, if I might, just remember that once you zone at light industrial, it's for every use that's allowed in light industrial, not just this applicant. So just keep that in mind as you look at the light industrial district and what is allowed within that district. And I appreciate that you want to know their intent, but look at the true intent of the light industrial.
Thanks, Vicki.
Good morning, my name is Janelle.
My name is Janelle Fink. I'm with Fisk Land Surveying, and I am here on behalf of the owner and applicant, which is Epic Outdoor Advertising, as well as the proposed acquirer of the property or buyer of the property, which is Waste Connections. The gentlemen from Waste Connections are all sitting in the front row there for you. I understand the questions that are on the table. I have a little bit of information that I would kind of like to share with you. We understand staff's position and, and respect what they've said, and, and can see that point of view and position, but we respectfully disagree in this and believe that the Light Industrial zoning is appropriate in this area, and I'd like to share some information with you. The property is adjoining the current Waste Connections facility on St. Patrick's Street. They own five lots. Two of the lots are on St. Patrick's Street and Zone General Commercial, and that contains their office building. Three of the lots are on the north and contain their storage area. Those are Zone Light Industrial. The two vacant lots that are adjacent to this, they're proposing to rezone to Light Industrial because they need to expand their storage area, and the storage use requires the Light Industrial zoning designation. So the, the intent is to acquire and expand their existing property. Most of us are probably familiar with Waste Connections. They're doing businesses Kiefer Sanitation, so we've all, we've all seen Kiefer Sanitation trucks and understand the role that they play in our community. Things that you may not know, in terms of service, they provide service to three thousand nine hundred forty-three commercial businesses in Rapid City, so nearly four thousand businesses. They provide services to over fifteen thousand residential commercial, residential customers. And they have an additional nearly four hundred, what they call roll-off customers. So their customer base, total customer base, is just shy of twenty thousand people that they serve from residences to commercial. They have fifty-five full-time employees in our community. Their payroll alone is two million nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Their total revenue as a company in Rapid City is sixteen million eight hundred thousand dollars, and their direct payments to our landfill money that goes directly into the city coffers is four thousand, four million three hundred and twenty thousand dollars each year. So they play a significant contributor to our community, a significant tax base that the city operates off of. So this is a vital and important component of, of our community. The area that we're talking about, that shows up on the, the screen there, these lots are originally platted. It's part of what's called Schlotman subdivision, and they were created in nineteen seventy-six. At the time that this land was platted, they were actually in the county. The, these lots were not a part of the city, and so the city kind of grew around them. The property to the south that you see, the residential property, is the original Rapid Valley subdivision, and that was platted in the late nineteen fifties, early nineteen sixties. So those residential uses have cohabitated with these commercial and industrial uses for years and years, for over forty years. Waste Connections has been on this property in particular for sixteen years, and prior waste service, whether it's been waste management or Kiefer, have been on-site for an additional twenty years. So they've been operating in this location for roughly about thirty-five or better years. One of the things that I wanted to point out, and I hope that I did a little better on my map this time. I tried to darken things up so we could see them a little better. Thank you, Fletcher. That gray just does not show up. I tried my best to darken it up, but it doesn't do a good job. This is a little wider map that shows you the current zoning. Little hard to see, but this is the Xed area here are the two lots that we're talking about. Everything in this area here is Light Industrial zoning, as is this strip here, this area here. The dark blue is flood hazard area. This is all light gray and Light Industrial. So the two lots that we're talking about aren't in an isolated area of Light Industrial District or zoning. They're part of a large area in precedent of Light Industrial zoning. So I, I, I think that the picture that you see in your packets only represents a small fraction of the area that's being used for, for that zoning. So we feel that the addition of the two, two other lots really is in harmony with the way that that land is currently being used. One of the things that we did is we tried to do our homework again. I think you have before you or on your dais, there's a couple petitions. Say they approached some of the most immediate landowners. This petition was circulated by Brendan Casey, and then the second attached one was circulated by Kiefer. And they approached those people that were most directly impacted by this. Okay. The people that signed the petition are located here, and those that are joined on, on this side to the east, and then a couple of the residential properties across to the south. This is the area of proposed rezone. These are the lots that are currently owned by Waste Connections. So those people that were most immediately impacted were approached and discussed and said that they didn't have any objection to the rezone. I do want to disclose that this owner on St. Andrew and this owner on Olive Street over here are, were renters. They weren't the actual owners. They weren't able to contact them, but they're the people that occupy the property. So they did their due diligence and checked with their neighbors to make sure that there were not objections. My understanding from staff is that they didn't receive any emails or phone calls or that expressed objection to the rezoning. And we understand or see what they talk about in the staff report about this being a quote-unquote revitalization corridor. But I take a lit, maybe just a little bit of issue with that as being described as a revitalization corridor. I think that with the advent of the Elkvale Bypass and the expansion on Highway forty-four, the bulk of the traffic that we see coming and going tends to gravitate towards Highway forty-four to the north of this and on Elkvale. I don't think that this serves as many people as maybe it did in, in the past before we had the bypass up. And so while it is an important connection, I don't see this as an area that's going to expand or grow. I think it's fairly well-developed out. They're talking about the residential uses that are coming just to the east of this, but that pretty much fills out the component of that area there. There's not a whole lot of land that's available for use. One of the things that I just want to reiterate is that it is so important to our economy to allow businesses the ability to expand and to grow. If you talk about, even envision relocating a business that size, where do you put it? How do you find as much land? Some of the other things that you need to think about is that there are also some undesirable impacts of relocation that are both environmental and financial. So for every additional mile that you would take this and push this use somewhere else, every mile that is driven by those trucks is increased use to fossil fuels. It's increased carbon emissions in our environment financially. Every mile adds more wear and tear on our trucks. It adds more traffic on our roads for maintenance. It adds more employee time coming to and from their jobs and the areas that they service and access to the landfill, and that raises customer costs. It doesn't take very long to see that all of those things impact our, their bottom line and, and our pockets and, and the pockets of the people that live in the Rapid City community. One of the things I thought was interesting, I was at the council meeting Monday night, and there was some extensive discussion about the ability or inability that we have to actually address and maintain our existing road system. We fall far short of the funds and the money that's necessary to maintain the network of, of roads and infrastructure that we have right now. And there was discussion, thoughtful discussion by a lot of the council members, talking about everything from increasing taxes, taxes to adjusting our budget priorities. Councilman Solomon talked about allowing our community to grow, to increase our tax base, to provide funds for that. And Councilwoman Amanda Scott made something that made a point that really brings home to this. She talked about the importance of using and providing service to existing infill lots and allowing those lots to build up and expand rather than continuing to push the development out. We want to make sure that we have a solid infill foundation base and that it doesn't become sprawl as we push or move businesses further out. So I think that there's reasonable, if not compelling, justification to support this rezone request. I think we have a company that provides a valuable service that needs to expand in our area. The land's been vacant for over forty years, and it's time to put it to use and service in our economy. I think that there's significant Light Industrial zoning in that area. I think that those that are most immediately impacted have indicated that they do not object to this, and I think it's a responsible use of our infill land area. I'm available to answer any questions that you might have, and I believe that Bob Novak with Waste Connections is here, and he can answer any specific questions. I know that we talk about the theoretical use of what could happen, but I hope you don't base your decisions entirely on the what-if, because you have people here in front of you right now that are wanting to invest in that land, invest in their business. And I think that for the long term, we would see them stay at this location. So I hope that your decision falls with, with Waste Connections today. Thank you.
Thanks, Janelle. Karen? Mike, do you want to finish up there? Karen's giving you the option.
I agree. I support the fact that they provide a very necessary need in the community. I think that there, there is a definite need for the, what you guys do. So it's not a matter of whether or not we're deciding they provide or do not provide a, a need. It's a very vital need. But at the same time, we have to look at the future of what could go in there, because these gentlemen are in front of us today, but it could be a different group tomorrow. And part of the job, I think, of the planning is to look at that and make sure that we protect the future, and that's truly what our job is. I will be looking to, to support the denial of this, only because of the future and what could go in there with making a change.
Thanks, Mike. Karen?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I first want to say to Janelle, you do such an awesome job. If I was on that side of the fence and was trying to get something, I would definitely hire you. You, you make good points, and I do believe that, that this is a, a need in the community, and, and they do a good job there. They're out there all the time. The other side of the coin is the community as a large part, and what's best for our community. And I think for me, not only is this, this a diversion from what we normally do in taking General Commercial, making it not a buffer any longer, but actually putting that industrial component, adding to that industrial component along our corridors and adjacent to residential uses. That's not a, a good planning tactic, and I, I, I couldn't support that. The other thought is, I mean, industrial uses, no matter what they are, shouldn't be on our main corridors. They shouldn't be next to residences. That's my belief. And I was at the city council meeting also on, on Monday night, and the discussion from those folks in South Valley Drive was, it was heartfelt. They wanted, they wanted to see that, that street changed. They wanted to see improvements made. They were concerned about the traffic. And you put more industrial traffic right in that center where you're going to have trucks coming and going, and, and then you're going to have residential uses there, and the new development that's going southeast of that area, it's just going to add more, more traffic congestion, and, and having an industrial along with the residential uses just doesn't quite fit to me. I also look at the, the use of our streets, and, and I know that that was another component that was talked about on Monday night, and additional traffic, industrial traffic, whether it's these folks or anybody in the future, is not as well-received on our streets as residential traffic. So I, and I think over, over time, every city that comes around, when they start to grow, the industrial uses are on the outskirts of all the cities. And then as the cities grow, not just Rapid, but everywhere, it, it expands around that industrial use, and how do you get those industrial uses to the outside of the city? And if you look at a planning standpoint, most, almost all cities, I would think, would try to get those industrial uses out to the edges, so they're not impacting the residential and commercial uses that are there. So in my opinion, I would have to say that I would deny this. That would be my vote. And it's, it's not so much because they're there and they're good uses, it's because of the, what's best for our community in the long run, twenty years from now. And I think this area, although it's not grown a lot in the past, is definitely going to be growing in the future. And you see more and more, more things going out to the east and the south of this area. There's not a lot of growth to the west anymore. So my, my stand is to, to vote to deny, so I'm going to yield the floor for now. Thanks.
Galen?
I'll, I'd actually support the rezone here to get this into Light Industrial. I, I don't worry too much about the what-ifs. The, the nasty stuff will require a conditional use permit, I think, and I'm not too worried about those, but I kind of feel like we're having deja vu, because we just do this last meeting with the conversion of General Commercial to a Light Industrial, where we have an existing buyer that wants to just expand their operations. So I guess the, what we did a meeting ago was we did a plan development. Can we just do that for, as another compromise? Would the applicant be open for that, where we make this Light Industrial with a plan development designation? Thoughts on that, I guess? I'll yield for now.
Finish Galen's thought, Janelle. Would the applicant be open to a plan development designation?
I think they would entertain that option, but one of the things I wanted to point out to you is, is there is no current development on this, other than the billboards. And so there's, there's nothing that's non-compliant that would be part of this coming into the Light Industrial District. And so it would be subject to all the requirements of Light Industrial District, which requires the screen fencing and/or landscaping. They, it requires that for a storage area, they have a seven-foot fence that is opaque or screened, or they provide landscape screening. So I don't think it's going to be something that's going to be, you know, you're not going to be seeing empty bins and trucks right from, from the road that we travel. If possible, could I make, could I offer another comment about the, the other uses? Would that be okay?
We've got a couple other commissioners out, but if you want to make it quick, please do.
I, I just wanted to point out that I believe that Karen was absent last meeting, and when you read in the Light Industrial zoning district, those of you that were here, we talked about this, it says that the industries, industries in Light Industrial require direct access to rails or street transportation routes. So it says in the first paragraph of Light Industrial zoning that they need access to our transportation or, or arterial streets. And I, I want to just encourage you to consider the other uses which are multiple. When you looked at the, the slide that showed all the Light Industrial zoning, and we go, oh my God, you're going to have an asphalt batch plant. Well, there isn't an asphalt batch plant anywhere in any of that other Light Industrial zoning. Those heavy uses like that tend to want to be further away and not in an infill area. You know, we have, we have Light Industrial zoning, but we don't have a lot of those uses that we consider to be objectionable. And there were multiple uses that were not objectionable that we talked about last year.
I'm sorry, I think we got the gist of it. I'll go to Rachel. She's been waiting a little while.
Thank you.
Hi. Well, I, I just want to mention that, you know, like what Karen said, you know, you've been very compelling, and I appreciate all the work that you've put into this. And actually, something that you said kind of answers my question, as I understand it, but Vicki, maybe you can clarify. I wanted to know is, if we change this to Light Industrial, does that mean that now we can have trucks entering and exiting on East St. Patrick's Street? And what impact would that have on the traffic? And, and that's kind of a concern of mine.
The answer is yes, that any uses allowed in Light Industrial, again, I caution you, you need to look at it from the Light Industrial District as a whole, not the, just the applicant that's before you today, unless you look at their specific use and do it as a plan development. But any use that's identified in Light Industrial and that truck traffic that could be generated from those uses would then be on East St. Patrick's that could be generated from those uses would then be on East St. Patrick Street. As Janelle noted, Mr. Chair, if I might.
Okay. Make it quick. We got Steve up, too.
As Janelle noted, the intent of a light industrial district is to be adjacent to streets. And those light industrial areas that are within this area are all adjacent to streets. There is a large spans of light industrial already existing in this area. Every community is charged with creating nodes of industrial uses so that we can meet the needs of our community. We've done that in this area. Those properties directly adjacent to this, to the south, are residential. That is different than what you looked at last week. In addition, our last meeting, last meeting, you had an existing structure. This is an undeveloped site. So, it's not reasonable reuse of an existing building. This is an opportunity to, the canvas is clean. What do we do today?
Thanks, Vicky. Steve?
I've got several questions, and one of them, I'll need to, Vicky, first of all, go with that one first. If we do this as a planned development, does that give us more control in the future?
Absolutely.
Again, I'd probably be leaning towards the planned development. And when I was on the city council, I was lucky in that I went to California, and their zoning laws are totally different than South Dakota. They actually had an entire area where you had industrial, and there's housing development right across the street. And it's because they have, you know, they're landlocked, you know, they're growing. But what they did is, and what I liked about the businesses, is they came up and they actually put a grass area there, and they had picnic tables and stuff. So, when you looked across the street, they didn't have opaque fences and stuff, which I think are horrible. They don't hide anything. You go by, and they're falling apart half the time. They look like crap. Were there, it was beautiful, a nice green area went along that way. And those that moved in there, the businesses that went in there, knew that they had to keep that. And when you went through there, it was beautiful, and there was houses right across the street. I think part of the problem we have today, right here, is we know it's there. And I think some people are taking offense that, oh, we're going to have some trucks out here and, you know, and not make it look good. So, if we could go with like a planned development, and they could come forward with something that maybe had some green in the front right there, and that as you drove by, and please don't bring me opaque fences and stuff like that, because that is horrible when you're coming into an area. And I also agree with somewhat what Karen and them say. We do have houses and other development coming in that area. So, what happened the last forty years is not happening now, because we're becoming, we're growing at a rapid pace, actually. But I think I could support something along the lines of a planned development if they'd come back and show something like that, because I think they're good neighbors. They're there. The land is right there. So, I could support something like that.
Rachel, again?
Sorry, I wasn't quite done. So, the other question that I had with regard to East St. Pat, and this is, I think, for Vicky, is if we did do a planned development, would it be possible for us to restrict trucks from coming in and out of East St. Pat?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Because the applicant does own the adjacent properties, potentially, there could be some consideration as to where that access would be taken. But because these are standalone, and that planned development would be just for these two lots, that would be their only access. And I think if we limited truck traffic, it would really eliminate the need to rezon it. I believe they would need to have that truck traffic on the site. And Janelle, correct me if I'm wrong.
We haven't fully discussed the internal circulation in regard to that, but my understanding is that this area would become an integral part of their existing storage yard and not a separate storage area. Is that correct, Bob?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay. And we did briefly discuss, I think, the planned development option, and I believe that they would be willing to consent to the planned development designation for these two lots, for the zoning to move forward.
Rachel, you finished? Karen?
I think everybody knows my stand and the fact that I would like to have this rezon denied. And I hear some people up here saying that they would be open to a planned development. That would be my second choice, if I had a choice. Personally, if that would be something that is amenable to the applicants, I would rather continue this and have those two come together somehow, so we could see what was going to be there. If Steve thinks a strip of grass would be good, it would not be just a strip of grass. You'd want to put trees or something, so that there'd be some barrier. That's for the rest of those folks, the folks up here that are interested in doing that. For me, it would still come down to the fact that it's industrial. It still comes down to the fact that there's trucks on our streets. And I just think that as a community, we want to see more residential, commercial uses in these areas rather than more industrial. So, based on that, I'm going to stop, but I would be willing to make a motion to approve the denial, so.
Are you making the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Karen made the motion to deny the request to rezon from general commercial to light industrial. Is there a second? Mike seconded that motion? Further discussion on that motion? Any other comments? Galen, I got a light up from you.
I've heard a couple of comments about truck traffic, but as I understand, we're not really expanding truck traffic here. There's already, you're just basically spreading out your existing operation, so there won't be any additional truck traffic that comes as a part of this. So, I still think it's appropriate for light industrial here. And it's my, so that's my first opinion. Then my second choice would be the planned development.
Steve?
I, too, would like to see the planned development, so I'd like to urge everybody not to support Karen's motion. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll make a substitute motion that we approve it with a planned development attached.
I'm no parliamentarian. I'd look for some help on...
So, the motion maker can make a substitute motion. You'll need a second to that for discussion.
Thanks, Steve seconded that.
So, for clarification, motion maker, friendly amendment would be that you're proposing to rezon the property to light industrial with a planned development designation.
Correct.
In essence, what that means is the applicant will have to come in with a final planned development prior to issuance of a building permit.
Correct. Does that work for you as well, Steve?
Yes.
All right. Discussion on the substitute motion by John, seconded by Steve. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would urge the folks that are doing this to continue this so that we actually can see that planned development. I think that would be important for everybody up here, so that they can see what is actually going to happen over there. I obviously won't support the motion as it stands, but if that is something that you folks think is going to be zoned light industrial, and it will always be light industrial for who knows how long, and then you come back with a planned development, I don't know exactly what barriers we can request through a planned development. Vicky, can you tell me that we can ask them to do certain areas of grass and trees, and can we do that through a planned development?
As a part of the criteria in review of a planned development, you look at what impact this use would have on the neighborhood. So, if it's your belief that there would be a negative impact, you could do a multiple of things that would be unique and maybe outside of what otherwise would be required in the light industrial district to mitigate that impact. With the planned development, we'll know specifically and in detail how this particular area would be integrated into their campus plan. And potentially, in visiting a little bit with the applicant, it could be that the truck traffic wouldn't come in or exit this property. It would use an existing approach, and that would go to Rachel's comment, and something that they could look at as a part of the planned development.
Okay. But just the fact that they've added this extra storage doesn't necessarily mean that they aren't going to increase their truck traffic, because you've got more spaces to put more trucks, you've got more areas to serve the community. There's a good chance that there would be more truck traffic, and that's the other part of my comments. So, I'll close for now. Thanks.
Thanks, Karen. Rachel?
So, my comment about the truck traffic wasn't really about an increase in truck traffic, because if there's a need for it in the community to have more, you know, sanitation trucks out there, then we need more sanitation trucks. It was really more a comment on where those trucks are entering and exiting, you know, from the property. And so, that's my biggest concern. I think, you know, like people have said, another big concern is the fact that this is moving towards residential. This is moving towards, you know, commercial. And it is important to have that buffer zone between commercial and residential property, just because that's a livability thing. And I don't know that tenants can really answer that. I've been a tenant many times myself, but I don't know that tenants can say, you know, what's best for the future of a community. But you are saying that in a planned development, we could stipulate that this would not be an entrance or exit for the property, that they'd have to go through the rest of their property. Is that possible in a planned development?
Well, remember this. This is transferable property as it stands today. This planned development is only for the two lots. If they came in with a planned development that included all of their campus as a part of that boundary, then yes. But this property could sell independent from the balance, and we can't deny access to the property.
Good point. Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Again, as I said, I support the mission that the keeper has in our community, and I appreciate very much what they do. I would go with Karen on that. I think we need to see what could possibly be done, because I'm making some assumptions that this, in order to put a grassed area, and I think that's a very good idea, to make it a softer approach to a business that's pretty hardcore. It has certain things that it does. But I don't know if they have the ability, if they really want this to expand, to make a good portion of it grass or trees or whatever that is. So, I think seeing a development and seeing something as we move forward, having an idea of what they could do, I think moving it to another meeting is a great idea.
Steve?
Just listening to everybody, and I guess the question, I'll throw the question back to you, because there's going to be a vote. And I would be agreeable to moving it to another meeting if it helps the rest of the board here make a decision. It sounds to me like you might have a better chance if we did see something. So, I guess I'd ask the question of you, if they would want to do that.
At the present time, my understanding is that they're just using this for storage. If you would like to see a plan that indicates that, I believe that we could provide that. In regard to Commissioner Kwazny's comment, light industrial comes with setback requirements of twenty-five feet from all lot lines. So, there's effectively a no build or no development zone twenty-five feet around. That also includes or would be added on to whatever boulevard or buffer there is between the property line and the actual driving of the right-of-way. So, yes, there is significant area to provide screening, whether it be fencing or landscaping or whatever. And that's built into the light industrial zoning already today with no changes or other restrictions through the planned development. But we could certainly provide a diagram that shows the storage area, if you would like to continue. We'd be happy to accept the planned development designation as well and move forward with that.
Steve?
Thank you, Chair. Vicky, so from what I heard earlier today, that if we do this and we do a planned development, we can ask for the grass area. And they're listening to us. I'm assuming they're going to come back with something that would fit that. And then if we go forward and say they sold it someday, then we'd have another planned development, and we'd be able to have restrictions on that, I'm assuming, as well, correct?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So, they could sell the property, as long as the buyer used it exactly as the planned development stipulated. It wouldn't be brought forward to you, but if there was a change of use and expansion in use, et cetera, then you would see it again.
So, now that we've got two out there already, what's the proper procedure if I want to go ahead and say that this moves down the road a little bit? We've already got two hanging out here.
So, I guess I didn't understand the question, Steve.
Do I make a third motion?
Oh.
On top of that?
So, I'm going to refer to Carla here. So, we have a substitute motion right now that says approve with the planned development designation. Are you wanting to make an alternate motion from that?
Right. Now, I want to get a timeframe before I do that from them. But yes, I'd like to make a motion so that everybody can see somewhat what they would like to do.
I've actually never had this question before. I believe you can make a substitute motion to a substitute motion, if that is what you would like.
That's my question, correct. So, before I do that, I need some sort of a timeline.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So, if you're going to make a substitute motion that the rezon be continued and be heard in conjunction with the final planned development, just know that we have a submittal Friday, this Friday. I doubt that they would be prepared to submit at that time. So, probably realistically, the next submittal Friday they could get in by would be April 7, and that would put this to the May 4 Planning Commission meeting.
Janelle?
I know we're putting you on the spot. Yeah. My wheels are turning. I'm gone the first week in April, so I'm out of the office. We'd be happy to submit a planned development designation request, which I understand is administratively reviewed. And we would be happy if you would continue this, to come back with a drawing that shows what they intend to do, so that we could follow this current path with the planned development designation and not have to, you know, basically go back to square one and do an entire planned development at this time. If we do the designation with the diagram that shows their intended use, would that be comfortable or sufficient? That would allow this to continue forward?
Vicky, maybe you can explain that avenue.
So, I think what Janelle is saying is that she could submit an initial planned development by Friday. So, if we continue this to the April 20 Planning Commission meeting, then we would have an initial planned development application along with the rezon to present to you at the April 20 meeting. And that would be more schematic without the detail and final design, but it would show you how it was going to lay out and give you somewhat of an operational plan.
Is that the mechanics you were talking about, Janelle?
Well, last week, when we did this two weeks ago for the Eddie's Truck Sale, you approved the rezoning with a planned development designation. We filled out an application for the PDD designation that was signed by the owner and approved by the staff, and it doesn't have its own separate track or course. It just became part of the rezoning request. That's where I was kind of leaning towards. It attaches the planned development to it. We'd be happy to provide, you know, a schematic if you need to continue for a couple of weeks. But to go back through the whole process again adds another, I don't know, six to eight weeks to the purchase process. They have a purchase agreement in place. I'm not sure if they would need to extend that. Bob, do you want to wait two months, or would you like to go forward?
I'd like to keep moving forward. The purchase agreement does expire anyway.
Okay.
Only issue with comparing it to last week is that was more of a concern on the use solely, not necessarily how the property was developed. I've heard some concern on how the property is developed on this one. Steve?
I would make my motion to what Karen had said, a preliminary, and I'd move it to April 20. That would be my recommendation. Otherwise, I don't think it's going to go further.
Mr. Chair, if the motion maker concurs, then your motion, your substitute motion, is to approve or to continue the rezoning request to the April 20 Planning Commission meeting to be heard in conjunction with an initial planned development application?
Correct.
And that's putting, and what I want to make clear, and Janelle needs to identify whether or not this is even possible, because tomorrow's Friday. And that means that she would have to bring in an initial planned development that shows that schematic. We just don't have anything in the toolbox that says continue the rezon. If you continued it for two weeks, and there was a site layout that was presented to you, there's no approval of that. That doesn't lock anybody down to anything. The planned development designation... The planned development designation allows them the freedom, and they can't go forward any faster until that final planned development is approved, other than potentially purchasing the property. The April 20th Planning Commission meeting, if Planning Commission says thumbs up on the concept, that's in advance of their May deadline. But that's really putting Janelle on the hook to get something in here tomorrow.
We can put some initial information together if you will, I don't know, pardon the haste, I guess, in putting it together.
You'll need a second on that motion for that to go forward.
So Steve made a substitute to the substitute to have a, continue to April 20th to be the rezoning heard in conjunction with a initial planned development application with just a schematic view of the use of the property. Is there a second to that motion? Anybody?
I'll second it.
All right. Karen's second of the motion. We've really talked through this one. Mike?
I hope the Keeper recognizes the fact that we're struggling with this a little bit because we do want to support you as a business. It's not a matter of whether the support is there. We just have to look at the future. And I, I want to recognize that, and I hope Keeper recognizes that it's a, we support what you do, we support where you are, we support a lot of things. We just have to come to a bottom line and, and don't take it as a, we don't support you as a business. So, thank you.
Karen?
I, I guess my only comment is on the motion is what Janelle is able to bring forward to us tomorrow. And I understand that's, that's going to be tricky. It won't be anything in, to scale, maybe it'll just be kind of a drawing that says, here's what we'd like to do. And when you see that, is that going to be enough for initial, an initial to go forward to say now we want more detail, but then get to the final initial plan or final plan?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
The good news is, is that Planning Commission, when you look at that schematic, you could then approve that with stipulations where you can't approve a rezone with stipulations. So it does give you that option. And I think that's kind of where we're at today is we're going to be looking at something pretty rough, but we'll probably have some good conversation April 20th, too. More conversation. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Vicki. Rachel?
Sorry, I've got a little sticky button here. My biggest concerns though with this, you know, the, the rezoning and even with a planned development, which, you know, I, I love ideas that are able to, you know, sort of make it work for everyone. But my biggest concern is still the whole idea that if this is rezoned as light industrial, even with a planned development, if that property is sold all by itself in the future, that we, we kind of lose, you know, to me, which is, is really important, the, the kind of traffic that's coming in and out of that lot. And, and that to me is kind of the biggest thing that I don't know that we can actually control for in the future, even if we agree for, you know, to a planned development. If it's rezoned light industrial, it's light industrial. And so that's, I guess, my concern.
Thanks, Rachel. I think we've got to take some action here unless somebody's really got something burning on their mind yet. So we're on a substitute of a substitute motion to continue to April 20th, to hear this again in conjunction with an initial planned development. That's the motion on the floor. Seeing no other lights, let's take a vote on that. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye? Opposed?
No.
Let's do a roll call just to be sure.
Braun?
Aye.
Bullman? Caesar?
No.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Herr?
Yes.
Oakstruck?
Yes.
Kozny?
Yes.
Rollinger?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Yes.
I have seven, seven to two.
Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the discussion on this item. Item 16.
Item 16 is a, sorry, one second. A major amendment to a planned development to allow an electronic reader board sign. It's property that's located along Mount Rushmore Road at the northwest corner of Highland Park Drive and the intersection with Mount Rushmore Road. It's the former location of the Colonial House and is currently being developed with a Culvers Restaurant. Aerial view showing the Colonial House, which was previously located on the property. A minimal amendment to the previous planned development was approved for the construction of the Culvers Restaurant, which included two exception requests to reduce the parking and to reduce the number of stacking lanes by less than 20 percent. Future land use of the property is mixed-use commercial along an entrance corridor of the city and with a revitalization corridor to the north. And the entrance corridor extends south along Mount Rushmore Road. Mount Rushmore Road is also identified as a principal arterial street on the city's major street plan. Here we have a site plan identifying the proposed restaurant, which is being built today. The location of the sign which we are reviewing is on this southeast corner with this being Mount Rushmore Road and north being in this direction. Landscape plan, which was approved with the minimal amendment. The sign package, this shows the location of signs on the building as well as drive-through. And again, this is the proposed pole sign, which has an electronic reader board message sign. And here we have the elevation. It's a 36 square foot, four and a half by eight feet, three inches sign. It's in compliance with the sign code, a maximum sign height of 45 feet is allowed. The overall sign height is 30 feet. And the total message sign area on the pole sign is in compliance with the sign code. The issue with this is that the property is located within an entrance corridor to the city, and the comprehensive plan recommends that no pole signs be allowed in entrance corridors, sort of to protect the, the views and the, as people are coming into the city, seeing what Rapid City is. However, I'll just reemphasize, electronic reader board signs are allowed under our current sign code, and the total sign height and the size of the signage is in compliance with the adopted sign code today. Here's a picture of the property. The sign is posted on the property, and you can see the Culvers Restaurant is going up. This is to the north, more commercial development, and you can see existing signage in the corridor. Gas station located on the east side of Mount Rushmore Road, and this is looking north towards downtown. This is looking across the street to the east and looking south where the entrance corridor to the city is located. And you can see that this is one of the areas of Mount Rushmore Road, which has been redeveloped, the, the street itself. And looking at other development in the area. So again, like I said, the, the proposed sign is in compliance with the sign code. The Planning Commission has directed staff to bring forward any electronic reader board signs for the Planning Commission to review and approve. It is located in an entrance corridor, which does not support the signs, however, like I said, the current sign code does allow it. Staff is recommending that, or if the Planning Commission deems that the electronic message board sign is appropriate, then staff recommends that the major amendment be approved with the stipulations noted in the staff report, which one of the stipulations is that the size, it stipulates the size of the sign. Are there any questions for staff? I understand there are some speaker requests for them.
Thanks, Fletcher. Mike, do you have a question for Fletcher?
Fletcher, are there going to be two signs on there or one?
It's two signs. The, the one that is currently, or that was shown just says Culvers. It's a static lit sign. It's not an electronic message board sign. So this is at the top of the sign. It just says name of the restaurant. It's the sign which is located here, which we have been directed to bring before the Planning Commission for review.
I think the question was about the existing pole sign. Am I right, Mike?
Correct. I believe that's for, that's the sign of the current, of Colonial House.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not certain that they're reusing, I don't think they're reusing that sign. It's coming down and there'll be a new, new sign going up.
That was the question. Thanks.
Okay.
Seeing no other lights, Deborah Jensen has a speaker request.
My name is Deborah Jensen. I'm a business owner on Mount Rushmore Road, as well as president of the Mount Rushmore Road Group. The Mount Rushmore Road Group was formed back in 2005 by business owners, managers, property owners, and interested citizens who were working to revitalize Mount Rushmore Road, as you now know, a very vital corridor and gateway to Rapid City, to Mount Rushmore and the Black Hills. Last week, the third and final groundbreaking ceremony for this incredible rebuilding project was held. When completed in 2018, it will have been studied and planned for 13 years. Four years of actual construction and a final cost of $30 million. At the same time, businesses and property owners have reinvested and literally put their own skin into the game, redesigning and fixing our own facades and landscapes, and even working on issues of signage to follow the vision of the corridor development plan, the Rapid City Commercial Comprehensive Plan, as well as the Mount Rushmore Road Commercial Corridor Visioning Workshop. Black Hills Bagels removed a small building and a pole sign. Colonial House removed an entire billboard. Pioneer Bank represents the advantages of a monument sign. Embarcet Travel plans some similar signage. Mount Rushmore Road is also attracting new business. Marco's Pizza, Caribou Coffee, Einstein's Bagels, and Culvers are all examples of good, solid, well-respected businesses. But now we have a dilemma. Attracting and keeping good businesses on Mount Rushmore Road and other corridors while maintaining the vision of attractive, non-cluttered, welcoming entrances. It's important to note that the application of Culvers for a 30-foot pole sign and 120 square foot of signage is far less than what the sign code allows, which is 45-feet pole sign and over 400 square feet in the sign code currently. But the sign code contradicts and it conflicts with all three of these very thick documents. So soon you will be discussing how to reconcile this latest dilemma. This isn't the first, and it won't be the last. In fact, item 17 is another example. You've been dealing with these conflicts now for many years. Since the comprehensive plan was approved in 2014, the Planning Commission has not denied any reader board in planned developments. But it's now time to update that sign code, to reflect these official documents. And this body of very thoughtful, knowledgeable souls needs to begin the process now of aligning the sign code within the city's vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Deb brought up very well, thank you, Deb, by the way, the, the plans that are in place and the things that we're going forward as a vision of the city. I don't know, I'm sure all of you have come down off of Mount Rushmore Road and looked at the, some of the signings that has been there in the past. And part of the Rushmore Road Group has been working on reducing that, taking down power lines so that the vision of Mount Rushmore Road is much better as we come from Mount Rushmore, which is a, a very big draw to our community. And I, I guess as we move forward and, and we will have to have as businesses, I would ask businesses to think about what the vision is and maybe not wait for the law, but to take a proactive approach and see what we can do to get rid of the Las Vegas look coming into our community, get rid of some of those flashing signs. And I, I think it's our challenge as we move forward. Hopefully, we move forward as a city and make the laws something that we can better support the vision. But I would ask businesses to really look at that. As, as businesses, we have to, we have to be the leaders. I went to Rushmore Mall, and I don't know if you, or the, the new mall, excuse me, and I, I looked at, they have a Culvers out there. They, they have no signage. And I go, well, you know, I never recognized that. So obviously, there's no need for the, a lot of signage. Now, I, I recognize that they have a draw there already, but it's amazing, and I challenge us as a community to look out there. And their, their laws or what they passed evidently do not allow the signs, I'm assuming, Vicki? Would that be right?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
They have entrance signs that are allowed within Rushmore Crossing, so they can advertise on those, and those are the big campus signs that you see up against the Interstate and La Crosse Street and East North Street. It allows for wall signs, but no other ground signs with any of, any of those properties in Rushmore Crossing that are a part of that development lot.
And I guess as we move forward, I think that we need to just keep the vision. And, and my challenge would be to business owners to make that vision happen and not wait for necessarily a law to make that happen. So that would be my comment.
Thanks, Mike. Karen?
Thank you, and thanks, Mike, for the comments that you made. I, I agree with, with the concept that this is an entrance corridor. Our, our comprehensive plan and all the other plans that, that Deborah mentioned really show that this is, this is what we want for our community. We've all been part of all these plans, and, and the citizens have been part of these plans. Everybody wants to make sure that Mount Rushmore Road is the best road that our, our neighbors and our traveling public that comes to see Mount Rushmore and to see our city can look at the city and say, this is a real progressive city. This is a city that, that looks to the future. And I think that's what we need to do. We need to say, what do we want as a community and, and what do we want our community to look like? And going back to before the, the road was reconstructed and seeing all those poles and all those signs, it, it just made it look so cluttered that one person puts up a sign, the next one's got to put up a bigger one so they can see past the other one. And it just, it perpetuates. And I've been in numerous communities across the nation that have just monument signs. And, and I have found every place that I ever wanted to go without looking at a big pole sign. And as the, as our community grows and the younger people get older, the, the devices that they have, electronic devices, if they want to go to any restaurant, they can say, give me all the restaurants on, on Mount Rushmore Road, and it'll tell you everything that was ever there without having to look for that pole sign. And so I obviously am not in support of, of the sign. I'm not in support of the electronic sign. I think it just adds clutter to, to that Mount Rushmore Road, and I think it, it sends the wrong message to our, our traveling public. So I guess I, I have a, a quick question after all this. This is a major amendment to add that, that electronic sign. Is that correct?
Yes. It's for, specifically for the electronic sign, the pole- Yes. It's for, specifically for the electronic sign, the, uh, pole sign has already been approved.
Okay. So I should just stick to the electronic sign and say, and say, the pole sign I didn't like to start with, but, but the, um, electronic message sign is, is one added dimension that I don't think is needed. I know, um, there's a restaurant just up the hill from there that, when that sign was put in, and I was part of this body, I, I had hoped that it wouldn't be scrolling. It would just be a static sign. And I was told that they wouldn't do certain things, and the sign code allows them to do it, and they, they do it. And, and I think that's the same with any electronic sign. You've got it there. You want to make sure that it's flashing and everybody can really see what's, what the message is. And, and I just, I don't think that's appropriate for our community, so I would be voting against the sign. So, thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, for a minute there, I thought we were talking about pole signs because it's going back, and that was going to be my question, too. This is about the electronic. The pole sign fits, that's what I heard originally. But I'm probably one on the minority. If you're out in love with electronics, I mean, I'd much rather have those than pole signs. To be honest with you, I, I love the color. I love, I think it makes the city look good instead of just the opposite. So, and Karen, I've had this debate over and over again. We agree to disagree that I really like electronic signs. So I'd probably support it. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions or comments from the commission, I look for a motion. So Galen made the motion to approve the, uh, major amendment to the plan development to allow an electronic reader board in the general commercial district with the, with the stipulations as noted. And Steve seconded that motion. Further discussion of the motion? Uh, Rachel?
So really, what we're talking about is not just the sign, but we're kind of talking about future signs, too, that, um, future signs in that corridor could also be e-readers. Is that how I understand it?
Basically, we've, in the past, asked to see every electronic reader board that comes in. And, you know, we've, people use past commission actions for justification on future ones, but we're specifically talking about this one today.
Okay, but we are kind of setting a precedent as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
So if someone were to come in with a reader board sign and their property is not a part of a conditional use or a plan development, the Planning Commission wouldn't see it. They would just get a sign permit. The one that's before you today is specific to this property at this location. I think the comments that have been shared quite well with those of you on the commission and by the audience is that unfortunately, our current sign code doesn't have any provision that is in compliance with the city's adopted comprehensive plan, so there's a conflict there. The comprehensive plan is a recommendation what our sign code should look like. To date, we've not amended the sign code. It's a very sensitive issue. We've amended it three times over the last 20 years. Committees have been formed. It's taken years each time for the committee to come forward with even, uh, a recommendation. I think what helps staff is that if the Planning Commission concurs that this is a conflict that should get resolved at such time that we do have our director's position filled, certainly, the current staff that you have today would like to sit down with that director and tackle that chore one more time to see what we can do with that sign code to ensure that it does comply with our comprehensive plan.
Okay, so that mostly answers my question, but, um, so what you were saying is that we're only seeing this because it's a plan development. Other businesses could put up an e-reader on, um, Mount Rushmore Road, and we wouldn't even see that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mike?
I go back to the, the goal of what we do with all these plans that we spend many dollars on. We, I will be voting against this only because of the, um, where we're, where we're heading. But I, I think it's important that we head in the right direction, and it should be a level playing ground. I don't think it should be unfair for any business that moves in why one person has a reader board and another doesn't, electronic. I, I think that, that ground needs to be level, and it's going to be very difficult. That's a difficult process to do that because we've allowed multiple readers on there. And it goes back to what I commented earlier, is that where, that's where the businesses come in. And it's not because I can, but it's because of what I want to see. And that's what we have to make sure everybody tries to, to make happen.
Steve?
Firstly, I think precedent was set when Civic Center put that huge one out there, and I've not seen them take it down yet. Thank you.
Uh, so we have a motion on the floor from Galen, seconded by Steve, to approve this major amendment. Are there further discussion on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, let's do a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Let's do a roll call again.
Braun?
Aye.
Bowman? Caesar? Gullaher? Herr? Hoekstra? Posney? Rollinger? Sullivan? I have six to three.
All right, the motion carries. Uh, item 16 is approved. Item 17?
Item 17 is a conditional use permit to allow a car wash and an electronic reader board sign in the general commercial district. Uh, it's property located on the west side of Haynes, uh, north of the intersection of Lindbergh. Property is zone general commercial district and is located along the established commercial corridor and, uh, commercial corridor in the city. Properties currently is made up of four properties. Uh, one of the stipulations of approval is that either a development lot agreement or a lot line consolidation plan be approved prior to issuance of a building permit to combine the, the four properties into one. Uh, currently located on the property are two commercial buildings. One's a casino and one is a, uh, trophy store. Those will both be taken down for the proposed car wash. You'll notice, uh, on this left side of the picture is an existing legal non-conforming mobile home park. Property is zone general commercial, but it's a mobile home park which has been there for many years. Uh, the applicant, I would like to note that the applicant did hold a public meeting inviting the residents of the, uh, mobile home park to see what was being proposed, and, uh, they got good feedback. I would also like to note that we had one of the residents come in, uh, to the office yesterday to discuss, uh, some of the landscaping, which I will, remind me to get to when we get to landscape page. Future land use shows the property as mixed-use commercial. And, uh, Haynes Avenue is the principal arterial street on the city's major street plan. Uh, here we have, uh, the proposed design. In this area here is the mobile home park, which is on the west side. Uh, and this is Haynes Avenue. Uh, we have a one-stall, 5,880 square foot, uh, drive-through tunnel wash, car wash proposed with a 25-foot setback from the property line to the west. Uh, there are 25, uh, vacuum stations located along Haynes Avenue, so the building will provide the buffer between those, uh, vacuum stations and the existing residential use. And then, right here, we have a three-stall, uh, pay area. So vehicles will drive in, enter one of those, pay for the car wash, and then, uh, travel through to get out. Uh, one of the main concerns of staff was the fact that there is this, uh, mobile home park located adjacent to the property and doing everything we possibly can to protect their quality of life uh, with this proposed project. And, uh, one of the ways we worked with the applicant was providing that 25-foot setback along that property line. And you'll notice in the stipulations of approval that a six-foot-high, uh, ornamental screening fence shall be provided and maintained along that property line. In addition, the, the 10 evergreen trees shown shall be planted at a minimum height of six feet. And that upon submission of a building permit and irrigation plan be submitted to, uh, ensure that, that landscape buffer is maintained in a live vegetative state. Uh, getting back to the, uh, remember, the resident of the mobile home park who came in, there is, there are existing trees located on the northwest corner, about 20, 30 feet tall. And, uh, they were hoping that the applicant would be able to keep those trees in place uh, because they do provide shade during summer months when they leaf out. Uh, I'm speaking with the applicant, uh, in order to put that screening fence in and the landscaping, the trees, as well as moving a non-conforming sewer line uh, to make it compliant for the mobile home park, uh, those trees will have to be taken out. Um, so staff is recommending the, with approval with the stipulations in the staff report concerning the fencing and the landscaping, but just wanted to bring it to your attention that there was some concern about that, and the applicant, uh, has explained the reason why, uh, the fence, the proposed landscaping, the moving of the sewer line, because the service for the mobile home park currently comes straight across the property to Haynes Avenue. And so in order to develop these properties, uh, they're going to take that and direct it north on the mobile home park property to a sewer main which is located to the north. Elevations of the, uh, proposed car wash and signage. Uh, you have before you on the dais a couple of revisions in the staff report, one of them being the actual calculation of the, uh, sign pack, signage being proposed. Based on what they're showing, and, you know, this will prove the sign package, and as long, it's in compliance with the sign code. Uh, this is the Three Bay Pay Station and a small office building, uh, which was on that north side of the property. Uh, here we have a look into the property. The sign is posted. Uh, there is an existing screening fence along these vacant lots which are on the south side. This is looking, uh, south along, uh, Haynes Avenue, and there's an existing, uh, convenience store with gas sales located just south of, uh, proposed developments. And looking across the street at, uh, urgent care and a coffee kiosk. And looking north towards Interstate 90 and the other, uh, commercial development located in the area. And the existing buildings, uh, located on the property, including, uh, Casino, uh, which is going to be removed as part of this application. And here we see, uh, looking to the west and the residential, the legal non-conforming mobile home park and further, and residential further to the west. Um, you also can see the gap in the fencing, uh, as it goes to the north, which will be a six-foot opaque screening fence. And, uh, looking between the buildings, and these, I believe, are the trees which the neighbor was hoping would be able to be kept. However, they are located on the applicant's or the subject property and not the mobile home park's property. And with the, as I stated, the fence and the sewer, uh, service moving and, uh, the proposed landscaping, we still think a, a significant buffer is being provided. And then, uh, properties to the north, the ShopCo and former, uh, office building or, or Office Max, I believe. I believe I forgot to put up the electronic message board sign. However, there are two pole signs proposed on the property. Uh, one being towards the north end, and then on the south end of the property will be a, uh, pole sign with an electronic message board measuring 48 square feet in size or six foot, six feet by eight feet. This is a commercial corridor, and, uh, the Planning Commission has directed staff to bring forward all electronic message boards within either a plan development or a conditional use. Um, so if staff recommends approval of the car wash, and if the, uh, Planning Commission deems that the, uh, message board sign is appropriate, that the, that it also be approved with stipulations noted in the, uh, staff report. Are there any questions for staff at this time? Uh, otherwise, the applicant is also here to answer any questions.
Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Fletcher, could you put the, the elevations back up there again? I, I'm confused by the two pictures. Okay, this shows the car wash, you know, entrance as you go into the car wash. Then you go down one more, and this shows the north side.
Uh, this is the north elevation, so that's where you would enter the car wash, and this is where you would exit. I did not mention that right here is a sound wall as you exit so that there's, providing the, uh, the barrier for any, uh, the drying of the vehicles, the, the fans as they're blowing as you exit, it provides that sound wall. And then this is the east elevation, which would be facing Haynes Avenue.
Right. Okay, now go to the next one. The next picture. That one. Okay, now you've got a, a north elevation that has three, excuse me, three, um, glass doors.
So this is the office building and the pay station. So the office building, which is closer to Haynes Avenue, and then there are three pay stations that you would enter in order to pay for the car wash. And, uh, based on this, it would appear you have to wait your turn. The, the doors will go up, and you get in the line for the one-stall tunnel car wash.
So you have to go through a glass door? They have to move the glass door to get through a pay station? That just seems odd.
Uh, I'll have the applicant, uh, answer that question specifically.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Kale McNibb. I own Spurla Consulting, and I'm a civil engineer, a design engineer of record on the project. So what you see is the, the three doors, uh, there's pay kiosks that are inside that enclosure. In the morning, you'll roll the doors up on each end. So you'll drive through one of the three doors. You'll pay for your wash, and you'll be advanced out of there in a queue fashion. So it, when it's your turn, essentially, you'll be let out of the queue to get in line to go into the wash itself.
Okay, I just, I've never seen a car wash that has, it's enclosed like that. I mean, I understand you have to move the doors up. I just thought, it looked odd, and I just was curious.
Uh, no, the, the idea behind putting the, the pay queues inside of an enclosure is so that you can protect them at night, or if there's an employee working there at night, you, you, they could literally shut the doors, and they would be protected from, you know, being outside handling money in an area that's, uh, you provide an area that's safer to handle money.
Interesting. It's just, I've never seen one, so I, I was just confused by that. Then I have a question, I think of Fletcher from the signage part. Fletcher, on the, on the staff report that's there, um, it says that it's required to have 660 square feet of signage, or is that, that a maximum, or is that the minimum?
That is the maximum allowed, based on the, uh, the sign code's calculation, which is two square feet for every linear foot of frontage.
So that includes not the wall sign? Does that include the wall sign and the pole signs?
That's for both. They're calculated individually. So wall signage, as you can see, is, they will have a total of 470 square feet. And then you calculate separately for the pole signs or ground signs, uh, which they would be allowed another 660, but they're proposing 596 square feet.
Okay, so there, it, it's not totaled, and it's for each?
It's for each.
That was a question I had for that. Thanks, Fletcher. Um, I, I, I think the, the, um, project is a good project. I think you've met all the things that you can do to, to alleviate any issues for the trailer park and the folks living there. I think the project looks wonderful. I, I like it. One thing I don't like is the pole signs, obviously. Um, I don't know why we would need two pole signs on that property. I mean, it's a large property, but, boy, I tell you, if you come down the street, you're going to see that car wash. I don't think that's an issue. And I also think that the, the reader board is, is, uh, larger than it needs to be reader, you know, from the reader board standpoint. So those are my two comments, and, and I would support everything, but I can't support the signs, so, therefore, I probably can't support the whole project. So I apologize, but that's kind of my stand, so, thank you. So I apologize, but that's kind of my stand, so thanks.
So we do not have a picture of the sign or what's proposed in that?
I can grab it.
With the signage, I, I know that the horseman has a sign on the front of their building, and they actually were asked to make it dark at night where it's not quite so bright, and they did that. The concern is, again, we, we've talked about the, the fencing and the landscaping and the stuff that they're doing to protect the trailer parks back there, but a flashing reader board, I, I guess I question whether or not we're protecting the, the needs of the community there behind the, the car wash.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So as you know, our sign code does have some pretty detailed design constraints for any of these electronic reader board signs. And what we found is that in the areas that we, when we receive complaint, such as the one over by the Central States Fairgrounds, it's because the night skies in that area are so void of other lighting that they seem brighter, and we've had staff go out late at night with light meters and verify that those signs are in compliance. One thing about this location on Haynes Avenue, there's a lot of other competing light already in the area. Not that that's a good thing, but this sign won't be as noticeable as in other areas where we have a lot of dark skies at night.
Well, not to carry on my conversation, I've already made comment that it is an entrance corridor, and whether it's Mount Rushmore Road, or whether it's coming off I-90, I think we need to visit, as businesses need to visit, and, and not worry about the law of the land, but what, what vision we're giving to those people as they come off the road. And I'll, I'll just stick with that.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I'd like to clarify, this is not an entrance corridor. The entrance corridor begins north of ninety. So that's one of the things, as we were reviewing this specific one, it's not in an identified entrance corridor.
Thanks, Fletcher. Did you find the sign?
So it's, the one at the top of the page is not, is the proposed sign on the north side of the property, and then this is an elevation of the proposed reader board sign.
Does the reader board have a static lit piece on top of it? It's kind of hard to read that.
Trying to clear this up. This is what was submitted with the application for the reader board sign. It just shows the dimensions totaling forty-eight square feet.
Okay. Further questions or comments from the commission?
I have just one more thing. So, and it was brought up by Karen here, that the necessity for two signs, and I guess I, I question whether or not that is necessary. What is the height of that? Is it eighteen feet high?
Eighteen feet.
Okay. And then I, I would still, although I recognize the fact that there is, Haynes is a, a well-lit street, whether or not there, there is an options to maybe bring that sign down or something, I, I, lower it, and I, I think that's maybe a future discussion at a council meeting or something, but that's what I'll stay with. Steve?
I kind of agree with Karen, two signs, yeah. But I do like the reader sign though. And that was my question, the reader sign, that will face north-south, correct? It's not facing the trailer park, it's facing north-south. Am I correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Seeing all their lights up, is there a motion? No, Karen, sorry. Cut you off.
I think it would benefit, thank you, I think it would benefit everybody if, Cale, if you want to get up and say, what, what does the reader board sign look like, or where is it located, or why we have two, or some of those, I think the sign questions are questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
We're about out of time, we need a motion to extend this meeting past nine o'clock.
Steve made a motion, Karen seconded it, to extend past nine o'clock. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
John Park, the owner of the facility. The reader board is envisioned to sit what is currently the trophy shop sign. We would take the top off the trophy shop sign, and then place this reader board at that existing location. So that would be in the middle of the site, not towards the south portion of the lot, as was shown earlier. And the larger pole sign would be on the north side of the lot. And if that is constructed, what would have to happen is there's a large Lamar sign that is currently on the property, and the lease on that sign would run out at the end of this year. So that, it would kind of be a replacement for the Lamar sign that's currently there.
So Mr. Chair, maybe we could have Fletcher circle on the site plan exactly where those signs are going to be, so you folks understand.
Yeah, that's where the larger pole sign would be, and then the reader board is right there where the trophy shop sign is.
Answer your question, Karen.
And where's the, the Lamar sign, you said it's coming down, where is that at?
It's right where the green is circled on the north, right there.
Okay, so you're just replacing that with the pole sign for?
That's correct.
Cale?
Yeah, that was my question, is we're basically just replacing the two existing, or upgrading the two existing signs as it currently sits, so it won't, it'll be very different, but similar level of signage, so. Little hesitant to see the need for two signs, but you're allowed to do it, so I'm going to move to approve this, per staff recommendations.
Cale made the motion to approve the conditional use permit and an electronic reader board per the staff recommendations. Steve seconded that motion. Cale, I do have a speaker request, did you want to say anything else, or have we covered it?
No, I, I believe we've actually covered everything I intended to say, so thank you for your time.
Thanks. Any further questions or comments on the, oh, Rachel, sorry.
I am wondering about these two signs. I understand that there are already two signs here, but, you know, we're replacing two businesses with one, so I, I'm wondering, is it possible at this stage in the game to actually ask, like, are one of those signs telling you different information that's necessary for customers, potential customers?
John or Cale, would you be willing to answer?
The, the large billboard you see at the north end of the site's the Lamar sign, it's leased to the end of the year.
Okay.
So we wouldn't be able to put our signage on it.
Okay.
So, you know, ideally, if that, that thing keeps getting re-leased, then you just leave the little Lamar sign where it's at. And, and then the sign for this facility is that reader board that's more towards the middle of the block, or the middle of the site.
Sorry. So the Lamar sign is actually advertising for maybe other companies?
Yeah, who was on the Lamar sign? Do you, I don't even know.
I think the gas station has one side of it right now, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not John's.
It's not for the car wash?
Uh-uh.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a stipulation currently that we, could they put in a pole sign and leave the Lamar sign, not saying that that's their intent, but is that currently limited by what we're approving, or potentially approving?
The stipulation of approval is specific to the electronic reader board sign and the size of that, and that no, new signs or expansion of that sign, and that all signage be in compliance with the sign code.
Okay.
And a sign permit be obtained for each sign.
So it'd be up to essentially sign code pass the, approving the reader board? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if they should ever choose to expand the reader board or add another reader board, the way the stipulation reads, you'd see that again, but beyond that, any additional signage would be allowed with a sign permit.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to note that there, there's a slight difference with this one versus others. This is a conditional use permit for a car wash, so we're really looking at the car wash aspect of it, and the other components of the project are as per the ordinance, so you're really determining is the car wash appropriate for the property, just for clarification.
Thank you for that. We have a motion, Karen has a comment.
Yes.
Quickly on the motion.
Yeah. Thank you. I, I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm pleased that the billboard sign is going to come down, that, that is a real plus, I think. And I think that the car wash is appropriate, and I, I do support that. Again, I, I just feel that the reader board is too large, and I don't, I, I just have a heartbreak with signs, so I'm going to vote no on that motion, but I do want the folks to know that I do approve the, of the car wash itself, so.
All right. Further comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. I got Mike and Karen as the noes. So the motion carries seven to two, and we're on to item eighteen.
Presenting Alex from the Parks and Rec Department for item eighteen.
There you go, thank you. I'm Alex DeSmid, landscape architect for Rapid City Parks and Recreation, also a new father as of Monday, so forgive me if I'm a little sleepy. Just brought our baby home yesterday, so I've got a short little presentation for you. Could you guys make that full screen? Or can I do that from here? I don't know. This isn't touchscreen, is it? Messed them up with a PDF here. Where are we at? Well, it should be right here. Oh, there we are. Thank you. Thanks, Rob. All right. So this is the Robbinsdale Park master plan, and Robbinsdale Park is a, oh. Where'd you put that keyboard? Get organized here, sorry. Robbinsdale Park is a hundred and seven acre park on the east side of Rapid City. This is the overall master plan that'll come to at the end of the slide, but this is essentially the map of the entire park following the report part of it. It's about a hundred and twenty-eight page report, I'm going to cut that down to about twelve slides here today. So Robbinsdale Park is a hundred and seventy acre park on the east side of Rapid City. It's one of a few parks that is outside the extent of the greenway, and it's the former city landfill. This master plan is a twenty-year update to the previous plan for Robbinsdale Park, which was more focused on the landfill reclamation following the development of some ballfields at this site. This plan is a detailed site inventory and assessment and historical reference of the existing park, really gave us the opportunity to dive into how this park came to be, what's been there, what some of the failures were, what some of the successes were, and what the community at large around this park really wants to see or, or not see. As you can see here, some of the surfacing conditions have been looked at as far as what we need to update, and which ones are worse than others. That walking path is over the old landfill and has some issues with it that need to be addressed. We also surveyed and did an assessment on all the parking and the roadways as part of this. But the main focus was the public input process that we conducted as part of this plan, really to get an understanding of what the neighborhood wanted to see, get their feedback, get their concerns, and really identify how this park is going to grow now that it's immersed in that neighborhood. And really, it's the park for the people, and they are the determining factor in what, what Robbinsdale Park will become in the future. And we had great success with that, we had really good turnout, they really were involved, and they really liked the process. Along with that, public information, public input gathering process, we looked at the history of the site and tried to meld those two things together, because yes, the public might want certain things, but there is some factors with this site that limit what we can do and where we can do it. So we dated our research back to the nineteen hundreds, and more recently to the nineteen sixties, and more recently to the nineteen nineties, and then on to the two thousands. But as you can see, Robbinsdale Park was on the outskirts of town, just like the landfill is now, and the city grew up around it and is really immersed in the site. This is some, just cuts of some of the planning commission things from the nineteen sixties, it's an interesting read in terms of the future forward thinking that, how we can use this old landfill space to accommodate the need for park space in the future. So there was some really good planning commission meetings, really good city council meetings back in the nineteen, I believe it's sixties here, this is June twenty-first, that really set this park up for success. Moving forward, you can kind of see how this park developed and grew, there was some planning efforts dating back to the nineteen seventy-nine era, and really showed some vast improvements of this. And the park was a beneficiary of the Land and Water Conservation Fund dating back to its inception in nineteen sixty-four, and really developed this park. There was, I believe, two hundred thousand dollars of federal funding that went into this park, and really made it what it is today. Moving forward, this is the reclamation plan, but at the bottom here, it's a little small, but it kind of shows how this park has grown, and one thing to point out here is that there was a softball complex built on the old landfill. That softball complex has been taken away and became the Star of the West complex. So the point of the master plan essentially is to ensure that we build things sustainably, put things in the right locations, so we don't build them and then have to rebuild them, or maintain them in a manner that is not sustainable. So I want to point that out, that middle picture down there shows that major softball complex, which is no longer existing. Another thing we looked at with this site, it serves stormwater immensely, there will be a major stormwater improvement up in that northwest corner there, that blue location, that will be coming, and that was kind of what kicked off this master planning process, is to see how that stormwater facility could, could work with the rest of the park and tie into the park, and not just be its own standalone facility, and ensure that we do it in a manner that is in keeping with the park, but also handles all the flows that it needs to handle, and keeps people safe around it. So back to the map of the park, I will go through this and kind of point out a spew, few specific things, but I'm not going to go through every detail, but we can kind of stay on this one and ask any questions that you might have. So this map really shows the master plan in its entirety. This was based on three concepts that we presented to the public, gave them an opportunity to collaborate with us in this planning process, and identify things that they liked, didn't like, locations of things that they liked and didn't like, and this is the end result of, of what our consultants. Stanley Design Group, Tallgrass Landscape Architecture, and Spurlet Consulting helped us come up with. And really, this plan divides the park into three specific park areas. To the north, you have what we call the neighborhood park. It's immersed in the neighborhood with residentials on three sides of it. To the lower left, you have what we call the sports park, where Harney Little League is currently and where BMX is proposed to be moved to. Harney Little League has been here since, before it's been a park, honestly. So it's been used in that capacity for its entirety. And then to the east, you have what we're calling the nature park, which is essentially the dog walking track and the prairie grass, if you will. And we're, we're keeping that essentially how it is. That walking path is the main staple of this park. And everyone loves it and everyone wants it to stay. And that's about one of the only uses that is sustainable on that site. So we're looking to improve that, essentially keep the path where it is, provide some additional landscaping, and really dress it up and ensure that the landfill is mitigated properly so that we don't have issues with any glass migrating up through there in the future. But essentially, those are the three areas of the park. The main focus of this park is really the through street. That has been kept. However, we are proposing to remove a section of street. I can't really draw on this, so I'll see if I can move my mouse around. Currently, there is a loop in this street that runs like right here. We are proposing to remove that loop in hopes that we slow traffic down and make this not thorough fair for cut-through. It is a, is it a, it is a park road. It's posted at fifteen miles an hour. However, that is not obeyed in any, in any facet whatsoever. So that is one thing, to try to keep this more in tune with a park setting, more on par with Canyon Lake Park, where it's more of a curved road, where you have to take your time and not drive very fast. The other portion of that road that I want to point out is currently the entrance is down here by the fire station, just west of the fire station. And the slope on Fairmont really is obstructing of that entrance. You really don't feel like you're trying to pull into a park. So we are proposing in the long term to move that roadway down to this intersection here so we can have really good entrance to that park, some continuity with that road and continuity between this park and the parks on Minnesota Street for bike peds and really make a safer intersection there for that roadway. As far as the neighborhood park, just general park improvements are being proposed here. Really no major development. We are proposing to remove BMX and one softball field from this location to make room for the stormwater facility in the future. And at this site, which is the top hill up here, we are proposing in the long term, more kind of a shelter that can serve some of the major events at this site, as well as giving the public an opportunity to take advantage of the views from this location. Expanding major parking throughout the park is another major facet of this plan. There's a major need for sports event parking down at this sports park area. And we, I think we've got a good plan moving forward with that. We've kind of combined Harney Little League's fourplex here with some plans to try to redevelop that and upgrade. Currently, those fields are dating back to the seventies, so are the restrooms. So they're really in need of some improvement. The old Hammer Quest site down here, we're proposing, we've worked with Harney Little League to identify what their use of that site will be in the future. Our lease has expired with the former leaseholder for that field. So we're looking at renovating that and putting it back into good use. Its condition has deteriorated immensely over the last few years. So we really want to dress that back up and get it in good working condition. And Harney Little League is looking at putting their youth, their youth fields down here, more of the T-ball, Pee-wee, and coach pitch fields. And we've tied that into kind of a centralized playground, shelter concession style restroom area. And then that can serve BMX as well, so that we don't have to have multiple facilities serving multiple different organizations. And that way, parking can be kind of condensed and that those are serving, those groups combined. But the main thing is that this wetland nature walking track will stay. It will be there in the future and we have every intention to improve it and keep that as an off-leash dog area. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Karen?
I don't really have a question, but I just want to commend you and all the people that worked on this master plan. The south side of that park has always been kind of ugly and, and you know, it's just, nobody wants to use it, but if you go to the north side, it's nice. And so I think this will make a major improvement and I hope it can go quickly. I know it's going to take a while to get it all put together, but.
Only takes money.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
Mike?
I like Karen, do support, I do like what you've done here. It's a beautiful park and it's put into an area, you know, we have Canyon Lake, you brought that up, and it's put into a different part of the town. So it brings an area that we've really built up. There's a lot of residential over on this side of the town. It just really makes it, it gives them eight ballparks as I see in place of five. A question on the concession, does the BMX get to use that concession also?
Our plan is to work with those two organizations to see if we can co-locate a concession restroom building. They both obviously want their own for convenience. However, space is limited, parking is limited. And if we do this right, I think we can serve them both well in some capacity, whether it's, you know, one restroom building with two sets of concessions on either end of it. In some manner, I think we can, we can work with those groups and make something work here.
Yeah, they both probably want to make some money, so.
Correct.
That'd be, that'd be great to look at that. Now, is there a turning lane all the way down on Fairmont there? Is that a turning, has it got a turning lane in the middle all the way? I don't remember.
I don't believe it does, no.
Now, is there a proposed turning lane at the time that we change that intersection?
There would be further studies and further planning that would go into that. Our plan really didn't address how we'd have to improve any of the existing roadway system, but we would work with the planning and engineering staff, probably have to do a traffic impact study just to address some of the issues surrounding that, like you mentioned.
Right. I think it's a beautiful park. It's a great idea. I think you're going to get a lot of traffic, so it's something that we should definitely look at.
It's got a lot of traffic now and I agree.
Job very well done.
Steve?
That would give me my question, is ingress and egress, because you've got all that sports activity going in and it looked like to me you only had one way out onto a major road there, or you can go back towards the residential area. Is that, am I correct?
Yes. Yep. Just like, just like we have now.
Right.
There, there is only.
Now, as soon as sports gets out,
Yep.
You clog up and everybody's sitting there and you got a line going back.
Yeah, Star of the West is the same way, where it's only one way in, one way out. And we do face our issues there, so.
That's why I'd like, at least as you go forward, and I love it too, I think it's fantastic, but that's the one thing I'd say is try to take a look at that. I'm not sure if there's much you can do. We're limited in space.
Yep.
Yeah, I really appreciate you doing, thank you.
Okay, Karen made the motion. Is there a second? Mike seconded it. Well, I'll give it to Rachel. How about that? She beat you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
One staff item. Wanted to let you folks know that this is Rob LaRocca's last planning commission meeting. He has accepted a position back in Omaha, so he's going home. But he's been with us almost six years. I think he's done a wonderful job for the city of Rapid City and I just wanted to thank him today for what he's brought to all of us and assisting all of you and wish him well.
Thank you, Rob. We appreciate all the help at these meetings. We need it, that's for sure. So we're sad to see you go. Speech? No? It's been a long meeting. I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Karen made the motion, Steve seconded it. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?